Please call the roll.
Counsel Dugger.
Here.
Counsel Hassan.
Here.
Counsel Kimmy.
Here.
Counsel Teeter.
Here.
Counsel Tivnan is excused this evening. Mayor Beatty is excused this evening. Counsel President Hartmeier-Preig.
Here. Thank you. The first item on tonight's agenda is visitor comments. Comments are limited to three minutes for each person. Visitors may state their comments and should not expect the council to engage in back and forth dialogue regarding the comments. The city managers are here taking notes if there's any need to get back to anyone on their comments. City recorder, I have one visitor so far. Is that all we've got tonight?
Yes.
Thank you. Andrew Abey, would you like to come to the mic for your comments this evening?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Did you want my testimony now or after the staff presentation for the Complete Streets Act?
No.
We'll have your comments now. Since it's not a public hearing on Complete Streets, we'll do visitor comments now for...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to testify. I just wanted to share with council that I think Jessica has done really excellent work on this Complete Streets resolution. I think this has been a long time coming for the city of Beaverton to kind of rethink how it prioritizes the modal hierarchy, and I think this is just excellent staff work. And I know you've got a presentation coming later, but I encourage the council to approve the resolution when staff present it to you. I think that this resolution really sets a stage for a lot of good constructive approaches that the city of Beaverton can use for capital improvement projects and street design standards to really elevate biking and walking in the modal hierarchy. And again, just wanted to compliment staff on their excellent work and encourage the council to approve the resolution when it's presented to you. So it was short and sweet, but that's just what I wanted to share with you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming to share your comments with us this evening.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Kathy French.
Thank you. You can hear me now, I bet.
Yes, we can.
Okay. I have just been wondering what in the last year have police changed? What policies to make our city safer for all? I haven't heard announcements. And what expectations and policies would discourage Beaverton police from violent responses or bullying unarmed civilians or mentally ill and so on? We continue to see a lot of these unacceptable responses nationally. I'd like to be assured that there are policies in place for our police. What ensures transparency of our police misbehavior? And what are the consequences of misbehavior? Are these also transparent? And do we have reasonable, quick timelines to address misbehavior? And I'm not really, I don't intend to point a finger at our wonderful police, but as a citizen, I would really like to see, I'd like to see insurance that our police are almost never going to misbehave like that. And I'd like to see that assurance in public in policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy, for taking time to comment to us this evening. Are there any further visitor comments requested?
No, Counsel Hartmeier-Preig, there are not.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda are council items. If you have any council items tonight, could you please put your name in the chat for me? Counsel Hassan.
Hello. So two out of three things I've talked with city manager about. The third one will be a little bit new, but looking for a thumbs up on three things. So the first one is, as we're starting to move more towards oversight as a council, wanted to make sure we start getting a quarterly council budget report for our own council to help us understand how we're spending, especially as we're looking at the current budget challenges. So that's the first one. The second one was a request for the chief to present on the stop report. Don't know if y'all saw it. They posted the stop report. It's a data that's provided through someone. They'll tell us more. But basically, I want us to kind of be able to look at the data, get a presentation from the police on the stop report, what the report shows, and how we should be looking at the report. Just on my initial look, there just seemed to be some disproportionate data around stops. But I want to know more before I make any assumptions. And the last one is getting some coordination on proclamations that come from mayor and us. I know that I had requested Black History Month to be a council proclamation. I'd like us to consider Asian American Pacific Islander Month as a council proclamation, Pride, Native American Heritage Month, Latin American Heritage Month, Transgender Day of Visibility, which has passed for 2024. And I just want to make sure that we have an opportunity to share anything that we want to be, proclamations from us as a council versus proclamations from the mayor and the mayor's staff specifically. I said a lot, so feel free to chime in.
Thank you. Counsel Dugger.
Sorry, I wanted to, and I think I talked to Jenny about this. I think it also needs a thumbs up. And this is exploratory, but I would like the city to bring forth some options for us as we, particularly with our partners, as they do construction. So I'm thinking like ODOT, and they did all the intersections, right? We need to set reasonable standards for pedestrian accommodation, and that clearly was an issue recently. And I think as a policymaking board, we need to kind of weigh in on that. And if there's thumbs up, at least to kind of figure out where we currently are and what are our options going forward, like what does Portland do? What do other surrounding cities do with their construction and with their kind of partner agreements with various other agencies? If you guys are in support of that.
Thank you. I also had something I wanted to bring up. Oh, Counsel Kimmy, go ahead.
So I don't know how the thumbs up works.
I'll come back to it, but if you want to comment on anything, yeah.
Just to, maybe follow up with Counsel Hassan, but not really exactly the same. But since we are going to receive the budget for the city, and it is my understanding that the mayor and the council set our own budget, right? And then it has to kind of, we have to discuss it and then present to total budget. And since it's coming up in May, I would love to see for us to maybe have a work session or roundtable or talking about council and mayor budget so that we can present to the cities for us to pass it. So I think that's the procedure that we have to take, but we have never discussed it. So I don't know what the timing might be. Maybe I can ask Jenny about how to coordinate that. But this is something that we kind of have to do before the budget. So maybe get a thumbs up later. But that's the comment I want to make. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll make my comment, and then I think we'll actually do a quick, like, round of thumbs up. That's all right, city manager. We got a lot of topics today for you. And I do want us to also consider workload because we all made a commitment to be conscientious of workload that we're asking for. So I'll just give my comment, and then we can maybe do a quick discussion on the requests. Sorry, staff. Apparently, we're really active tonight. So I wanted to bring up something that's been on my mind for some time. But it's really obvious when I'm the person sitting in this chair tonight why I want to bring this up tonight. And that's that we specifically designate our mayor to be full-time in the charter, and yet we didn't give the mayor complete full-time benefits. And in this case, the mayor really doesn't have protected family leave. And I think that that's really unfortunate. It's not really reflective of our values as a council. And when we talk about wanting to create equitable access to serving in elected office, I think this is something that was created in equity. I like to take accountability. So even though actually none of us were on the council when that was decided, we're the council now, right? And so it's something that I want us to think about, potentially revisiting. The resolution was 20273 back in 2020 was when this was established. And just consider, like, if we really want our mayor to, or any of these elected positions, to be something that anyone from our community can serve in, how can we kind of solve that inequity? Live our values? Make sure we codify that someone serving in elected office should have protected family leave? You know, mayor is home, or not home yet, but she's with her new baby. And, you know, she'll even be working through her quote-unquote "leave" because it's not codified. So I would like to ask if city manager, maybe city attorney, could kind of think about something to bring back to council that we could consider, maybe an amendment to Resolution 20273, since it was done by a resolution initially, but something for us to look at. Okay, any other new items? Okay, so yeah, go ahead, Counsel Hassan.
Can you help elaborate, like, protected family leave? Like, we can take a month off, right? Like, so what specifically are you asking for?
Yeah, so in the initial resolution, there was nothing about paid leave. And so in this case, it's someone who needs maternity leave. But if someone else were serving in the role of mayor and they got sick, or a parent got sick, or someone needed care, it's just like unclear whether or not our mayor is eligible for, like, FMLA or the same type of protected leave or even paid leave that, like, city employees get. And so it was just an interesting distinguish to me that, like, we require the mayor to be full-time but didn't grant those same full-time, like, benefits, you know? And in the state, we do have a new law that'll be going into effect in September that would grant further benefits and will grant further benefits to all city employees. But that doesn't apply now. So it's something where, you know, something may help remedy this, but I think it's also just important for us to live our values and say what this should be for anyone who wants to serve in that capacity.
Sorry, one more follow-up. So September 23, what happens? I should know, but I don't. I'm sorry. Like, we'll have protected paid leave for...
There's statewide leave going into effect in September. I don't remember how long it is, but there's like a new payroll tax that we're all paying that is like helping cover that so that the benefit is there for all employees in the state of Oregon. Okay, so Counsel Hassan, I'd love to go through your three. I remember two. What was the first one?
Quarterly budget reports, which hopefully shouldn't take a lot of time, just so that we can see where our spending's at.
Specifically on council?
Yeah.
Yeah. City manager?
Yeah, no, that's very easy to do. Happy to do it.
Okay. Hearing that, I'm a thumbs up. Okay, all right, the stops report?
Stop report. So just so y'all know, the VPD publishes, it sounds like yearly, a stop report. And so if you pull the report most recently, there's just some interesting data. I'd like to get the police to come back and help us understand what the data is saying and what it means.
And that would be an informational report, and we're happy to bring that back to you.
Thank you. And then the third item is on resolutions?
Yes. Oh, the third one's a little bit more, yeah. I just want to make sure that we have an understanding of, like, what a, right? Like, what a mayor proclamation is and what a council proclamation is. I do think there's a couple of proclamations, like Asian American Pacific Islander Month, Pride, Native American Heritage Month, Latin American Heritage Month, and Transgender Day of Visibility. Those are things that I would like us as a council to do. If it helps, I'm happy to help coordinate some of the language so that it's less of a staff lift or work with some of our community partners. But I do think that it sends a message to our community when it's a council proclamation.
I have one fault question, and maybe it's for city attorney. It's just if, I'm like totally in support. Those are all things I would really love as a council body for us to acknowledge and recognize too. But I'm curious if there's, if you could help us understand the difference between a mayor-all proclamation and a council proclamation, just to like understand, like, do we, you know, because it's now the body speaking, is there anything else we need to be considering?
With a mayor proclamation, it's a single individual, and that's why it's so easy to quickly do a proclamation if you were mayor, because it's just one person acting. With a council proclamation, what you have is a potential need for seven editors. And we've had some proclamations where there's some serious wordsmithing going on. And until you get to a point, well, you could choose to only have a majority support something, but if you're looking for unanimous support, you really have to work at it sometimes. So that's the major difference between the two. But I like the idea, just to, I mean, interject something, of having maybe a standard proclamation that comes from the council. There would be work at the front end, but you would know year after year this would be the proclamation, and it wouldn't necessarily change a lot from time to time. But that's the major difference. Probably over answered the question. Sorry.
Thank you. City manager, any comments on that?
So I would recommend that there is a policy around this, and so there's a body of work to do. And that will be somewhat time-consuming. Well, we'll need to clarify some of the questions that were brought up on the difference between the two proclamations and then the process in which we create those. I think in the interim, if we want to have these done on a regular basis, I'd love to come back to the council and really hash out what are the 12, I'm just randomly picking a number, proclamations that you'd like to see a year? And no surprises on new ones, because what happens is if we keep getting proclamations at each meeting, there is a significant time that takes to get that done and how many layers of staff that goes through. So if we could get clarity on what your appetite is for that and at least work on those and with no other ones that come up, unless those are one-offs and you would bring those up under council items, that might help us streamline it and kind of piggybacking on what Bill was saying. So I just want you to be aware that putting a policy together does take a body of work. So I'm trying to figure out what that stopgap measure is so we can get some of these scheduled and done for you and then bring a policy that outlines really a clear path for you to get these done in a really efficient way.
Thank you. Counsel Hassan, how do you feel about that?
I, that's, I am okay with that. I think my one, like, right? So I'm just thinking out loud, like, you know, Asian American Pacific Islander Month is coming up, right? And so I'd like to make sure that a couple of these, we have something. It doesn't have to happen tomorrow, but I just want to make sure we're working towards something that when we want to have a unified voice, we can. I do think that while we have to work with the staff to make sure that the body of work is being done, that, and I don't know, maybe I'm just wrong, like, are we not able to partner with an organization or a group if that is something that we, if that is, like, that they want to bring something forward? Like, I represented the Muslim community, right? And we worked together on that proclamation, and we brought that. And so what does that look like and what does that mean? I don't know if I'm answering, if I'm just asking more questions. But I just, I don't want to stop us from being able to do the work of proclamations, which I think some of our community members truly value.
Yeah, thank you. So it sounds like this is probably a future agenda item, right? For us to maybe have a work session on around, like, what goes into the policy and, like, setting, like, what the, maybe the annual ones are and talk through that. Does that sound okay?
Yes, I think that's fine. And what would be helpful to hear from council is the ones that Counsel Hassan said, I believe there's one, two, three, four, five, are those satisfactory to you? We can certainly look at those and begin to work on them if that is within the prerogative and then take the policy issue separately from that and create a process going forward, given time sensitivities of what you were pointing out.
Looking for...
They're very standard, so I don't see actually a really difficult time creating the body of work for the actual proclamation, assuming that we're kind of going with some standard language that we've used before. The process and the policy is what will take time.
Okay. We feeling comfortable head nods? I'm seeing head nods, yes.
Yes.
Okay, and the ones that Counsel Hassan said, people feel comfortable with those?
Do you want to add anything? I just picked the ones. Yes, sorry. Okay, so I wing this because I do want to hear from everybody. But Black History Month, we already did, Asian American Pacific Islander Month, Pride, Native American Heritage Month, Latin American Heritage Month, and then Transgender Day of Visibility, which is next March. I'm, yeah.
Okay, I'm seeing comfortable head nods? Thank you, city manager.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now let's talk Counsel Dugger's request. So if you want to give us, like, the one-sentence sum to refresh everyone?
Yeah, it was, excuse me, a policy for when we engage with partners to allow construction, like ODOT, sorry about that, intersections and things like that that we're not permitting, or that we have a policy in place that says, you know, if you're going to close this intersection, it has to be limited, right? It can't be closed for months. It can't, you know, like we saw with some of the intersections recently. And when I had asked Jenny about it, I don't think there was a, we couldn't find a formal policy that the body has in place. And I thought, because when we established our priorities at the retreat, street safety was one of them, that this would kind of fall into that. I don't, for me personally, it doesn't have to happen tomorrow. It's just, it is obvious when it doesn't happen, how damaging and difficult it can be. I saw, I have a neighbor with a stroller, couldn't go, you know, couldn't walk downtown, right? And if you're in a wheelchair, good luck, right? Like, I crossed the street with Jean, right? And we both, you know, if we would have, we both potentially could have done it illegally, right? Like, it was bad, and it's not acceptable that we ask that of our pedestrians and our cyclists in those situations. And we just need a policy that outlines what we will accept from our partners.
Thank you. Is there general support or am I seeing head nods, thumbs up?
My question would be, sorry, how does that going to work in? Yeah, that's my question.
So it is a little bit challenging because if you are going to put forth standards or principles for that you're asking another entity to adhere to, and it's not listed in an IGA, enforcement is a little bit of a challenge. One option would be for this body to identify what your principles would be for yourself and your standards and work with the outside agency to adhere to those best we can, absent of any type of agreement. We could take a look at our IGA's and see if there's an opportunity to embed some of those principles in there. But at least you would have a working source document that reflects your standards, and then that would give us a blueprint as we're working with other agencies about what's acceptable and what's not. And so I would, I would think that that might be the first bite of the apple on this process because, as you know, you have multiple agencies involved. It gets a little challenging. Would that, would that work at least as a first step?
Yes.
That would work for me.
Yeah, okay. And city manager, please let us know what an appropriate timeline is, given staff capacity and things like that. Like, I do think we have a lot of asks tonight. And so knowing that and, like, what's an appropriate timeline, given everything, and what can actually fit in reasonably, because I think we have two more we still have to do.
Yeah, I would definitely say that you're going to need at least to give us, probably by the end of summer, if that's reasonable, because we do have this little thing called the budget, so I'm going to get to that first.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, Counsel Kimmy's ask was about looking at council budget together in advance of the budget.
Yeah, so council budget includes mayor and a council budget, but I think it's part of the budget process that we have to go through it and then pass it and then submit to the general budget. That's my understanding. So we haven't done it, and then, but needs to be done pretty quickly because of the May budget outline or date. So that's what I wanted to do, when we want to do it and when we should do it, yeah.
Thank you. City manager, do we have an opportunity to do, like, a work session on this before our budget sessions begin?
So you would need something, you'd need to do that before May 9. That's your first budget subcommittee meeting. And again, if it's a work session, it's just to provide feedback, so you're not considering your budget outside of that. But it would be good feedback for me as we make any changes to the budget moving forward. But we're on a tight timeline, so your only opportunity would be to try to turn something around for the 18th of this month or the first meeting in May.
It needs to be done, so just wondering, can it be done, a work session? Can it be done a roundtable, a special session, whatever we need to do? Because it has to kind of get it done, right?
If we can also, I'm happy to offline, look at dates. And if you want to do a singular item, and we can find a day that works, we can schedule that as well. I mean, generally, council would just need to give feedback on the concept, and then I could work about that, work with the implementation.
Who submits our budget, like, on our behalf when we do budget?
So the city manager would submit a proposed citywide budget on council's behalf for consideration. And normally, I would just submit a status quo council budget. And then if there are things that you wanted to collectively do, you could make that known through the budget process. However, this is a little bit of a unique situation, as Counsel Kimmy is pointing out. And whether there needs to be substantive changes to that, that would be your prerogative. I don't have direction from the body to make any changes to your budget at this point that are, that are beyond what your status quo budget would be.
Yeah, the reason I brought it up because we have citywide or city budget shortfall. And we're talking about cutting 10% to 30% on the budget citywide. So just for that continuation of that thought, I'd like to take a look at our budget. That's the thought behind just taking, looking at it. Because if not, then the city manager would submit almost the same or identical to the previous ones. And that's why I wanted to take a look at it.
I think, I think one of the opportunities in council committee, I mean, to be speaking for you, is that do you want to be getting into that level of feedback during your committee meeting? Or do you want to just proactively get some feedback to the city manager in advance of the budget being published? That, because I don't have any feedback on your, on your council budget. So that would be your prerogative. You have a number of ways to do this. You could have a separate meeting scheduled way in advance, or you could wait till you're actually in the hearing if you know what changes you'd like to make. But you're not creating the budget, you're just providing feedback because I just want to be mindful of budget law and how this process works, that we're not getting kind of ahead of our skis, if you will.
This one's a hard one, since we're talking about potentially adding a meeting or, you know, something. So is it something that, like, does anyone have a strong opinion on how you want to handle versus? I mean, because there is the option of us making amendments within the committee, right? To say, like, we want to take these things out. We can use that mechanism. But yeah, we haven't done it as a body, so...
Right.
To give that direction, it needs to happen.
Just having a work session, I think, would be good, just to have us dialogue.
I mean, I can support that. I'm struggling because in this two years, you know, of city council, we've never really reviewed our budget outside of budget committee. But we are dealing with these budget cuts. So how are we showing that we're looking at our own budget when we're looking at this? So flexible, but we've never, on my, you know, in my third year, I don't know that I've ever had an opportunity to review the budget before it gets published.
Yeah, I would ask this, and this is kind of of council president. Like, historically, prior to the last couple of years, the city council president would actually present the city council's budget to the budget committee, and that stopped the last couple of years. And I think that's something you probably haven't seen.
I've never seen it.
But I think it's a really important point because, you know, a couple of us were like, why aren't, why isn't the council presenting their budget requests like any other department or whatever? And I think, I think that would answer a lot of this because I think, I think this work probably, in my opinion, like, if, if, if you guys really want a work session, I would support that. But in general, like, our budget is not very big. It doesn't, you know, it's minuscule compared to the bigger picture. And I think we could easily make those changes in the budget committee if the council president would be willing to present, you know, what all those line items are and what we're spending. And then we could quickly make an amendment in there, and it would take five minutes.
I'm going to go to Counsel Teeter and then city manager, please.
Yeah, thank you. I would definitely support us looking at council and mayor budget. And I think it would take more than just five minutes since council budget includes mayor budget. And when you total up travel or other expenses and conferences or professional services, like, the total adds up to be a pretty sizable number that could actually be a few staff that we are saving. And if we're asking staff to make some really drastic cuts and potentially laying people off, like, I want to be straight up about that, I think we also need to model the way with our own budget and put in some pretty solid cuts of our own. We haven't looked at it in two years. I think it is a little bit different from more than two years ago when there was the old form of government, when council budget would have been different from mayor as the full administration. So I don't know what the process is. Maybe it is a work session. Maybe it's a few of us go look at the budget together, our council and mayor budget together, and just put a proposal together, just a draft to be cut up and criticized and debated about so we have a starting point. I just feel like there's a lot of work here, and I'm worried that it wouldn't be adequately addressed in a budget subcommittee or in a budget meeting.
The only way that I know of is we'd have to create another subcommittee to actually have council... to actually have council group do that, so we need to consider that as well. That's more work for staff. City Manager?
Yeah, no, that's what I was going to say, is that typically, it was handled in that way with the council president under the old form of government. You would need to do some type of subcommittee if this is the process that council would like to go through moving forward. Otherwise, you have, you have one of two opportunities. Either we find a day that works and we have a work session, and I want you to keep in mind that there are a number of meetings that are already scheduled for this month, so it may be very challenging. So it depends on everyone's availability. Or we carve out time as I develop the budget presentation to make sure you have an adequate amount of time to, to speak to the council budget. It's just, you won't have that insider time with just yourself to provide feedback. So that's the only missed downside to doing that. So why don't I go back and look and see what the options are? See if there's a window, if that works for this group. And if there's not, we can take it, we'll cross that bridge as we, as we get there. But let me take a look and see if there's something that we can schedule. I would just encourage you to take a look at the council budget that was emailed to you. You have a copy of it, so you can be familiar with it for both the, the managers, excuse me, the mayor's program, as well as the council's program. And then I'll let the council know what availability we have after I check into your calendars.
Quick question. Can it come up in the next council, like, could we, even if it's just a brief overview of looking at our budget in our next council meeting, is that possible?
Yeah, I'm gonna be looking at those options, in, in addition to just a standalone date. Just depends on what that calendar looks like.
I would support it coming in the next council meeting. I don't want it to be more than, as long as this council item section has been, if possible. Just, we come up with a couple ideas and throw them out there, but.
Thank you, City Manager. Okay, final council item, one that I brought up was to look at leave and the benefit situation for our mayor. So my ask is really to have maybe City Manager and City Attorney, depending on what's appropriate, come back to us with a conversation that we could have about that opportunity for the mayor.
So I'm struggling, and like, bear with me. When we have an elected body that's full-time and they take time off, like, does something, like, is, does something happen? Like if our mayor took a month off, just, I'm just putting on my HR hat, right? Like, you're elected, so it's not like you're putting in PTO, and you're still paid.
Well, I, I think that's a question.
Okay, yeah, so please answer, so I can understand.
Really, the, from a protected leave standpoint, the protection is that you are an elected official, and so short of term limits, recall, leaving the district, so you're no longer eligible to hold office, you're protected in your leave. The, the, no one here can fire any of you. You're all elected. So that's your protection on your leave, in, in short order. There are some other things that might be worth looking at in terms of benefits, I understand that, but in terms of protected leave, you could be gone for a long, long, long time. People may not choose to vote for you because you're absent, but you could finish out your term short of being recalled, for example. You'd be paid.
Okay, I, I think I know what I want to say. I support families and the importance of making sure that people who are full-time elected or part-time elected have access to benefits and whatever they need. I have some concerns, because we haven't really ironed out roles and responsibilities of what our, our mayor and our counselors look like. Like, I don't think that that's ironed out, right? Like, we don't know, like, you can not show up, I'm not saying that you should, but we don't have like some, something that helps us understand, like, what is the expectation? And so in my mind, I would 100% support a person who was in office that was full-time to take time off. Do, do, do we do PTO? Do you log PTO?
Can I make a point of clarification? And I, Council President, please correct me if I'm not hearing this right. But there's not, this request is not to add anything, it's actually a point of clarification. So the mayor gets paid regardless of whether she's sick, working, not, it, it's a salary, right? Full-time. This is really making a point of clarification, and either the attorney can provide a legal opinion, or we could actually clarify the resolution that she's entitled to paid, like, leave. And so we just want to make that clear, so we can look at that resolution, have, work with the city's attorney's office, making sure that we have all the language that's made, that's clear. If there's a legal opinion that needs to be made, we can do that, or we can amend the resolution. We'll have the attorney's office maybe give us some guidance on what works best and what the resolution does and doesn't do. We need to ask that question, and then we can come back and give you kind of a path forward. But I don't believe that we're making an ask here to add any benefits, to add anything. It's really a clarifying question of, we know this person is entitled to that, it's just how does it read? Does that help?
That, that's what I thought, because.
Right, right, that's kind of where I thought folks were going there.
From Council President.
I think, for me though, because nothing is written down about it, our mayor is going to be working probably next week, right? Like, they're, like, so I think that it's important, and it could be part of roles and responsibilities, to say, like, if you need this time, you're entitled to take this time, right? And I understand that the mechanism is the voters, it's not the same as like being terminated, but I just think that, like, trying to create that equitable access to serving our community includes being able to take time to care for yourself or your family or a new child, without that pressure of like having to show up to the council meeting the next week, or what, you know? Like, that, like, it, to me, it should really be written down, that, that time is there.
So I just want to clarify, are you just talking about leave, like, family medical leave?
At this point, yeah, because I, I just think it's important for us to live our values in this, in this particular situation. So are we comfortable with, yes?
I feel like I just need to see the resolution, that would really help. It sounds like it's a technicality. I support, like, Mayor Beatty, if you're listening, like, if you need to take the next three to four weeks, like, please do, like, I would not want anyone to, to take as much time off as they needed when they had a child.
Okay, thank you. Our next agenda item, staff items.
All right, well, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to remind the council, and then just announce to the community that we're going to have two community budget briefings scheduled. They're actually coming up in a couple of weeks. One is on April 20th, and that will be a virtual meeting. The other is on April 24th, which will be an in-person meeting in the council chambers. Both begin at 6:00 PM, and we really want to just have an informational meeting with the community about what's happening with the budget and understanding next steps and how they can get involved. We also have on April 25th, Budget Council Workshop. That will be a regular council meeting, and there we will talk about different budget strategies, and that begins at 6:00. And you should see some information being pushed out to the community by the end of the week. So just wanted to remind you all of that.
Thank you so much. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the consent agenda, but first, is there a motion to approve the minutes from March 15th, 2022, and April 5th, 2022?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It was moved by Council Hassan and seconded by Council Kimmy, is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Yep.
There are two of you who are here, so if we abstain.
Do we have, yeah, do we have quorum to approve the minutes?
Yes, you have a quorum, because the group of you create the quorum, and then Beaverton has a, those present and voting can pass a, a motion. So if only two of you voted, if it's a tie, we'll have to come back another time. But hopefully it'll be unanimous.
Okay, thank you, thank you. All right, recorder, will you please call the roll, call vote on this?
Council Duggar. Council Hartmeyer-Prigg.
Yes.
Council Hassan.
Yes.
Council Kimmy.
Yes.
Council Teeter.
Abstain.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, it's moved by Council Hassan and seconded by Council Duggar. Is there any discussion on the remainder of the consent agenda? Okay, seeing no discussion, will the recorder please call the vote?
Council Duggar.
Yes.
Council Hartmeyer-Prigg.
Yes.
Council Hassan.
Yes.
Council Kimmy.
Yes.
Council Teeter.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have proclamations. We have three proclamations tonight. I've asked Council Teeter to read our Arbor Month proclamation, and Council Kimmy to read the Food Waste Prevention Week, and I will take the Fair Housing Act proclamation. We're gonna read all three, and then I know we have some staff members here to present a couple of these too, but using, that I'm in a mobility device tonight, I'm gonna ask you to come forward once we've finished reading those, so we can present those to you. So Councilor Teeter, please take it away.
Thank you. Whereas 40 million trees are planted in Oregon's national forest each year, and millions of other trees are planted in Oregon cities and on private forest land. Overall, in Amer, in America, 4 million trees are planted every day. And whereas Oregon Arbor, Arbor Month was established by the Oregon State Legislature to encourage tree planting and tree care, as well as to gain an appreciation of the environment. And whereas the city of Beaverton recognizes that trees and parks are important to enhance the beauty of the city, and actively encourages the planting and care of trees throughout the city. And whereas the city of Beaverton has planted and maintains over 7,000 trees on city land and over 30,000 street trees, and adds new street trees every year to enhance the quality of the neighborhood environment. And whereas, the city of Beaverton has been recognized for 28 years as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and will receive a Growth Award from the Tree City USA for the 18th year, and desires to, to continue its tree planting efforts. And now therefore, Lacy Beatty, Mayor of Beaverton, Oregon, does hereby proclaim the month of April 2023 as Arbor Month in the city of Beaverton, and encourages all city, all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and our woodlands.
Thank you. Council Kimmy?
Yeah, proclamation, whereas food waste is a significant problem in the United States, with up to 40% of all food produced being thrown away rather than eaten. And whereas food waste not only represents a significant waste of resources, but also contributes to greenhouse gas emissions and climate change. And whereas, reducing food waste is an important step towards creating a more sustainable and equitable food system. And whereas, preventing food waste can help save money with a family of four saving an average of $1,600 annually by preventing food waste. And whereas, food waste has significant economic, social, and environmental impacts, including wasted resources, lost income, and greenhouse gas emissions. And whereas, food waste prevention is an important issue that requires action from all members of our community, including individuals, businesses, and government. And whereas, promoting food waste prevention is an important part of building a more sustainable and equitable future for all. Now therefore, I, Lacy Beatty, Mayor of the city of Beaverton, do hereby proclaim April 10th through 16th, 2023, 2023, as Food Waste Prevention Week in the city of Beaverton, and urge all residents to actively, to prevent food waste in our homes, businesses, and community.
Thank you. And our proclamation on Fair Housing Month. Whereas the month of April 2023 marks the 55th anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing for all who live in the United States. And whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, and national origin. And whereas Oregon Fair Housing Law guarantees that housing throughout the state of Oregon should be made available to all citizens without regard to marital status, source of income, sexual orientation, including gender identity, and survivors of domestic violence. And whereas, fair housing benefits the community by providing economic stability, increasing community health, and by improving human relations in all communities through diversity and integration. And whereas, acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunity are unacceptable to a common sense of decency and fairness. Now therefore, on behalf of Lacy Beatty, Mayor of the city of Beaverton, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2023 as Fair Housing Month in the city of Beaverton, and urge all residents to observe this month by reaffirming our commitment to fair housing for all, and joining the effort to promote and support fair housing. I'd like to invite Jared Lane up to receive the Arbor Month proclamation. He is our city arborist. Do you have anything you wanted to say?
Yeah, I'll say a few words.
Okay, great, I'll have Council Teeter hand you your proclamation, and then if you want, you can take the mic at the table.
Thank you, council. It's an honor to be here to receive this proclamation. Everyone can help Beaverton celebrate Arbor Month by searching for an Arbor Day tree planting event in your area, visiting a park or arboretum to study the trees, check out books about trees at the library, or celebrate at home by planting a tree. Trees should be celebrated every day for the long list of benefits they provide. From the air we breathe, to the feeling we get walking through a forest, trees are the dynamic infrastructure that cities rely on. The benefits are numerous and always changing and growing with the trees. I'm happy to say that I am one of the many caretakers of the trees in Beaverton, along with our dedicated urban forestry and landscape staff. Beaverton has been a Tree City USA for 29 years, and has 19 Growth Awards going above and beyond the requirements of a Tree City USA. The city is recognized worldwide, and has earned a Tree Cities of the World designation. Our urban forestry program is also recognized by the Society of Municipal Arborists, showcasing the knowledge and dedication to the profession. With all the day-to-day hard work of the city staff, we join together with Beaverton residents to celebrate the hard work that trees are performing on a daily basis, and the endless benefits they provide. To celebrate Arbor Month, the city of Beaverton will be partnering with Friends of Trees and volunteers for our annual Arbor Day planting event this Saturday, April 8th. Ash Creek Forest Management will be planting 8,000 plants and trees on Earth Day, April 22nd, along Fano Creek. And General Tree Service performed tree care on a historic ponderosa pine tree on Fourth and Angel. Thank you, and happy Arbor Month, Beaverton.
Thank you, Jared. And to receive the Fair Housing Month proclamation, welcome Terry Wilson and Joyce Stevens to the dais. These are our co-chairs of the Housing Technical Advisory Group. Thank you so much, sorry to make you walk all the way up here. Thank you so much, if you have any comments, please feel free to take the mic.
Thank you, city council.
I don't know.
Is there a red light?
Operator, okay. Thank you, city council and Beaverton. My name is Joyce Stevens, I'm Vice Chair of Housing Technical Advisory Group. Today in Beaverton, one in three residents are Black, Indigenous, and people of color, or BIPOC. One in five speak a language other than English at home, and roughly one in 10 identify as having a disability, including myself. Recognizing fair housing during the month of April is important to our community members, and it speaks volumes to the city's continual efforts to promote housing justice, equity, and inclusion. The city of Beaverton should be a place where we can all continue to call home. Thank you very much for this proclamation.
Thank you, thank you for serving on our technical advisory group, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is an ordinance first reading. So on April 18th, 2023, during the regularly scheduled city council meeting, a public hearing will be held regarding an ordinance vacating two bicycle pedestrian trail easements at 10700 Southwest Allen Boulevard, SV2023-0001, SV2023-0002. Okay, and our next agenda item is an action item regarding the adoption of the Beaverton Complete Streets Policy. Jessica Engelman, the floor is yours.
Hello, council, it's great to be with you. Let me log in here and get the presentation up.
And can I have you bring the mic a little bit closer to you?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, great. Again, it's, it's great to be with you. My name is Jessica Engelmann, I'm a senior planner in the transportation planning section of the Community Development Department and I'm joined tonight by Jean-Sanishel Biggs, the Transportation Planning Manager. I joined you all last month on March 7th for a work session to discuss a potential complete streets policy for Beaverton. And I'm back tonight to go over what we heard at that work session, walk through the addition that we made to the policy in response to the feedback that we heard and ask council to adopt the Beaverton Complete Streets Policy by resolution. So just as a quick reminder, this is the journey that we're on. It began last year when we won a TGM grant to update our transportation system plan. Building off that, the next step is to adopt a complete streets policy for the city. And this is why we are here tonight. Also, as a reminder, these are the guiding principles included in the Complete Streets Policy listed as Exhibit A to Exhibit 1, the resolution in this agenda bill. We discussed the policy at length at the work session, so I'm not going to go over it again tonight. What I would like to go over is what we heard on March 7th. It was great to have this conversation and we're really looking forward to continuing it as we move forward with the transportation system plan update. First, we heard a desire to apply this policy broadly and make sure people know about it. Specifically, we heard that the policy should apply to all streets in Beaverton, that the policy should go beyond capital projects and apply to all transportation processes, practices and decisions in the city. And that the policy should inform discussions about state and county streets in Beaverton. We also heard a desire to distribute this policy widely and make sure it is well-understood, both internally and externally. Second, we heard themes around analyzing, learning and adapting what others have done. Specifically, we heard that council wants to use this policy in tandem with data and analysis to inform decision-making. We heard a desire to learn from peer cities as we tailor a complete streets approach to Beaverton. And we heard a desire to take advantage of existing national research and resources that can help the city implement this approach. And finally, we heard themes around urgency and opportunity. We specifically heard that we need to find ways to apply this policy quickly in places like South Cooper Mountain, where new infrastructure is being built now. And we heard an openness to try new approaches with an understanding that what the city has been doing to date has not always been getting the outcomes that it wants. So most of what we heard was about actions that we need to take into the future and how this policy should apply to the work that we do. However, one thing we wanted to directly address in the policy was the expectation for data-driven decision-making. So we added an additional guiding principle under the Sustainability and Innovation Section that does just this. The data-driven decision-making principle makes it clear the city will use data analysis and performance monitoring to support decision-making. And the city will learn from its city, peer cities when applying the complete streets approach in Beaverton. So with that, I'm happy to ask, excuse me, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. And tonight, we're requesting you take action by adopting the Beaverton Complete Streets Policy by resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Councillor Hussin?
Thank you, this is so amazing, very excited, very excited to see the data and form piece. I have one question and if you already answered it, apologies, sometimes repetition helps. Once we implement this policy or as we implement this policy, like how will it impact like the traffic commission, like some of those day-to-day decisions that are being made without this policy? Like how does that shift the work that's being done? If at all?
I think the, the shift will happen gradually, but this is, this is what we have. You can expect that anything that is brought forward to you will be, ultimately council has the final say on anything, right? But there's a lot of work in terms of updating, implementing documents and procedures and just the way that we work, right? And so that will take time and that's about making sure everybody's informed and figuring out how to do that. So this policy, everything should be consistent with the policy that is coming to you from this point onward.
Okay.
But ultimately, council has the final decision on everything, so.
Like, does this get presented to the, like, you know what I mean? Like, how do they know, like, how do our bodies, like a traffic commission, understand that this is now passed and this is what we're working towards?
Are we going on a roadshow? Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I expect that we will be.
Okay, okay, okay. I just, I just want to, like, you know, understand, again, like, I, I'm super excited, super, super excited to pass this, support it. Just want to make sure, like, we understand from a, not just a council, but constituent standpoint, like how this will start to, the ripple effect of it, because it is, this is really big and really exciting, so.
That's a really excellent quest, question or statement because I think ultimately, everything that comes to you through traffic commission, you would have that expectation, that it's consistent with it. So it's upon us to make sure that it's, it's known widely.
Yay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Teeter.
Yeah, thank you. This is a policy I'm very excited about. One of the joys of being on this council is being able to lay some really foundational pieces for our city as we move forward. And this is one of those foundational pieces. For community members who might be watching right now or watching later or might be hearing about this policy later, like this is a long-term investment in the future of our streets. So we've got streets that we know are dangerous and we've got some streets that we know work really well. You won't necessarily see immediate changes, but they will be happening over time as we make new investments, as we build new roads or repair or redesign streets. And, and I'm just really excited because this will help guide us and, and share some of our core values throughout all of our next steps. So Jessica, thank you, Jean, thank you, and to the other staff who've worked on this, I think this is really exciting.
Thank you.
Councillor Duggar?
Yeah, I won't repeat, I'm very happy, but I do have a question. One of the things, and, and this failed to pop into my brain last time. So one of the things as a cyclist I see is there'll be a great section of infrastructure and then it stops. And then we come to a different one and there's a new bike lane again. And then, you know, so is there a part missing? I understand that this is, you know, like, like we build the network in pieces, right? Is there a part that prioritizes, you know, that, or that should be in here that prioritizes the completion or continuity of the networks? Does that make, I don't know if I'm asking the right question.
Yeah, that absolutely makes sense. One of the things that we're going to be using this policy for next is to start thinking about street, new street design types that we'll be bringing forward to you. And I, the way I talk about it is that we need complete streets and complete networks. Those two things work in tandem to really have that user experience. And as we move forward with the transportation system plan update, that's really where a lot of that network part comes in. And I think through that, we're also going to be talking about what our goals are, what those policies, what our transportation policies are as a city and what we expect in terms of performance metrics. So we'll be talking about that a lot more as we move forward with the transportation system plan update.
Okay, that's, that's exciting. This is transformational. People don't realize, this might even be the most significant thing this council's, you know, if, I'm assuming we're going to pass it. This might be the one of the most significant things we've done to date and I'm, I couldn't be happier. Thank you to all the staff and everyone who worked. Transformational. If you're watching this, Beaverton, you've got some rock stars right here, this is transformational. Really good work.
Thank you.
Councillor Kimmy?
Yeah, rock stars, right? We don't look like one, but. We, we, including me, but, yeah. Yeah, okay. All right, but thank you so much. I don't want to, yeah, repeat what everybody says, but I'm looking, really looking forward to transportation system plan. That's going to come along, it's the big thing that I should expect. One thing I ask is a lot of graphics and pictures for me, not just numbers. That'd be wonderful, thank you. Thank you so much for your hard work.
Absolutely. Thank you. I wasn't here for a work session, but I was really happy with where this landed. And I think one of the things that I thought was really cool and innovative was the way that the complete street also includes the way that we care for our earth and that, you know, that we can use our roads to help us with stormwater management. You know, like all of that piece, I thought was really cool. So even though I wasn't here to give input, it was really exciting to see that in there. So seeing no further questions or comments, is there a motion to approve the resolution to adopt a complete streets policy?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 4835, adopt a Beaverton Complete Street Policy by resolution.
Second.
Thank you, moved by councillor Hussin and seconded by councillor Teeter. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, will the recorder please call the vote?
Councillor Duggar?
Enthusiastic, yes.
Councillor Hartmire Prigg?
Yes.
Councillor Hassan?
Yes.
Councillor Kimmy?
Yes.
Councillor Teeter?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted, 5-0.
Thank you, thank you, Jean, thank you, Jessica. All right, is there any council new business this evening?
I, I have one, quick one.
Sure, councillor Kimmy.
I'd just like to commend you for coming in on a wheelchair and conduct this meeting, you did a wonderful job. You got, well, how many more meetings, meetings you have to conduct? But looking forward to the, our council meetings.
Oh, thank you. All right, we have reached the end of tonight's agenda. I want to thank staff and our community for coming this evening and the meeting is adjourned.